This is regular city council meeting for September twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. It's on. You can hear me now. Thank you. This is a regular city council meeting, September twenty-seventh. Before we start the meeting, I am going to ask that we bow and pray for the folks in Florida. We know what a storm feels like, and I'd rather it not happen to them. But if you would, join me in prayer. Our God and our Father Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the blessings you give us. God, we thank you for the fact that five years ago, a storm hit us, and we were able to recover from it more quickly than anyone expected. But God, there's another storm on the way now. And we pray that it doesn't hit anybody. But if it goes into Florida, God, we pray for the people that are there. We pray that they will have made proper preparation, and that they will have evacuated the coastal areas. And God, we pray that you would be with them so that the blessing we had of no deaths caused by a serious storm would be theirs too. We ask that the storm weaken or not go there at all. But God, we pray that you would bless them, watch over them, keep them safe, help them as they recover from what goes on in their part of their world. And all these things, we pray in your name. Amen. Have a seat. For just a second, I mean, you can keep standing. Go on to, we're gonna pledge in just a second. Jan, you gotta sit down. I have to get down and get my notes out here. All right. Join us in Pledge Allegiance. Let by. Thank you. Have a seat. You can have a seat. We'll stand up again sometime, eventually. Number one thing, number three on the agenda after the pledge and so forth, I want to establish the existence of a quorum. We'll have a roll call of the council. Ward one. Ward two. Three. Four. Mayor here. Next, one of the fun things we get to do, we have a proclamation. Very good. It hasn't been dated yet. Let me, where's that microphone I'm gonna take with me? Right over there. One of the fun things we do from time to time is to issue proclamations for people and things that deserve special recognition. And we've got that tonight. A few weeks ago, I was privileged to go to a gathering of people from four H that had their annual banquet for the year. And we had a great time with them. We ate a lot of good food, watched a bunch of things get sold off in auctions, and had a lot of good visitation time while we were there. And this is proclamation for four H. If folks are here that plan on being around when this is read, and you want to be part of receiving that, if you want to find your way up here so that the newspaper folks can get a picture, come right ahead. Have to get it too big. We'll squeeze up close together. All right, National Four-H Week Proclamation, celebrating opportunity for all. Whereas the city of Rockport is proud to honor the Four-H Youth Development Program of Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service for one hundred and fifteen years of providing experience-based education to youngsters throughout the Lone Star State. And whereas this admirable program, which seeks to provide a learning experience for the whole child, including head, heart, hands, and health, helps young Texans to acquire knowledge, develop life skills, and form attitudes to enable them to become self-directed, productive, and contributing members of our society. And whereas it's more than five hundred and fifty thousand urban, suburban, and rural youth participants ranging in age from eight to nineteen, hail from diverse ethnic and socioeconomic backgrounds, and truly represent a cross-section of the state. And whereas the program undoubtedly could not have achieved the success that it has today were it not for the service of its more than twenty-two thousand volunteers who have given generously their time, talents, energies, and resources to the youth of Texas. And whereas throughout its proud history, the Four-H program has developed positive role models for countless Texans, and through its innovative and inspiring programs, continues to build character and to instill the values that have made our state strong and great. Now therefore, it be resolved, the city of Rockport hereby designates October the second through the eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, as National Four-H Week in Rockport, and commend the Four-H Youth Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service and the many men and women who have made this program a success. And it's signed by the city councilman, Mayor Tim Jero, on this date. Thank you, young people. Y'all have anything you wanna tell them about Four-H? Or do you wanted to get up here and smile and say, hey, thank y'all for what you're doing? We'll see you next time. Get out here with it. I'll do that in just a second after we get through with the pictures and so forth. If you get everything in there, what I'm trying to do right now. All right, now we've got another one.
Did the ag agents wanna say anything? Did you ask the ag agents?
Ask me if you have a word you wanna say, buddy. All right. Some time ago, I got a phone call from a lady that said, hey, we're doing something to recognize the hard work done by a lady in our community who has done a whole lot of good for young people. And we have nominated her for an award with state agency. Asked me if I knew this person, if I'd be willing to add a letter to what had been done for the nomination. So I want to read for you what we believe that she has done and the things that are impressive to us. And I will tell you that she has won a statewide award, and we appreciate her very much. I first met Diane and her husband Terry at our church, seven, five six years ago. And they were very active in what went on in our church. And the letter that I wrote behalf of her nomination is this. "Purposes this letter is to support the nomination of Diane Nielsen to receive a Texas Association of Education of Young Children Advocate of the Year Award." "I first met Ms. Nielsen at First Baptist Church in Rockport, where we are members, she and her husband were, were, and still are, active in church activities, and are dedicated and faithful members. I got to know Diane and Terry much better as a result of Diane's work with children in our community after Hurricane Harvey in August two thousand and seventeen. At the time of the hurricane, I was chief of police in Rockport, and I served in that position nineteen eighty-nine to two thousand and nineteen. And Hurricane Harvey was the first disaster of this scale that I had dealt with. Mrs. Nielsen was tireless in her work to provide assistance to children and their families in our community. She is still, after five years, a passionate advocate for children, and has continued her work on their behalf of the Children's Coalition of Aransas County for approaching five years. I fully support the nomination of Diane Nielsen and Nancy McCollum, who wrote the original letter for this award. I am happy to be able to do this. She had put in countless hours. They were doing this work last weekend when they could have been here doing some other things. And she has spent a major number of hours taking care of seeing that young people that are not privileged young people have a chance to eat, to learn, and to have safe and fair time where they can live their lives. And I appreciate it very, very much. Thank you. I appreciate it." All right, next thing on the agenda, number five is presentation promotions for police department. Steve Stevens.
The city manager, as you well know, Mayor, one of the highlights of my job is the opportunity to promote some of our folks to recognize hard work, dedication, not only to the police department, but to our citizens. And it's something that I like to do in front of our elected body, in front of our city administration, and in front of our citizens, and in front of their family. And something that throughout my career, it's a dedication of, it's a commitment that takes hours of perseverance as you progress through your career. My family is well aware of that. I always invite my spouse to these. We're empty nesters, so my family doesn't come along, but my spouse certainly, because she knows the sacrifice that it takes. So the first promotion I've got is we're going to promote Detective David Gerloff to lieutenant. So if I can get Detective Gerloff to come up with me real quick. Detective Gerloff has almost nineteen years of law enforcement experience. He's been with us in Rockport for two years. Currently, he's assigned as a detective. He can step right over there. Before that, he was with the Elgin Police Department for about thirteen years. He started his career with the Columbus Police Department. He holds a Master Peace Officer Certificate. He certifies a TCO law enforcement instructor, a firearms instructor. He's a mental health peace officer and an intoxicalyzer, breath test operator to name but a few of the skills that he brings to the table. He has nearly three thousand hours of continuing education through TCO and other aspects of law enforcement training in investigations, professional standards to include internal affairs, supervision, and leadership. He's completed training through the FBI LITA program covering internal affairs, as well as the trilogy that LITA offers, Supervision, Command, and Executive Leadership Survival. He's completed the Bill Blackwood Law Enforcement Public Information Officer course, and he has been accepted into the LITA program, which I know the mayor is familiar with and probably several others are. It's the Law Enforcement Management Institute of Texas that is on par with the FBI National Academy. And so we look forward to him going to that program here pretty soon. He's married to his wife Jennifer for over seventeen years. They have two children, Kimberlin and Brylin. They both attend Rockport Fulton High School. When Dave and his family moved here to Rockport, they fully had, they fully engaged into our community. During his time off, they enjoy, the family enjoys time together, working around the house, fishing, and traveling. I want to point out that the rank of lieutenant in the police department, it is not only our first line of supervision, but it also is the command level rank that we have, especially at night. And in particular, Lieutenant Gerloff is going to be our nighttime watch commander. And so, in fact, this evening, when we all leave here and we go to bed, Lieutenant Gerloff will be on patrol tonight. He'll be effectively the chief of police tonight. While we're all enjoying our slumber and we're safe asleep in our beds, he'll have the watch. He'll be out in charge, and we'll all sleep safe and sound. And I will personally, because he is there covering the city, all the patrol officers will be working for him. And I've got absolute full complete confidence in this individual's ability. It's why I chose him for this particular assignment. So with no further ado, we'll make this promotion real quick. Let's move over here for a minute. Now, if I can get Patrol Officer Juan Canales to come up here with me. Officer Juan Emmanuel Canales is one of our patrol officers, and we are promoting him to the rank of detective. He'll be assigned to our CID, our Criminal Investigations Division. Officer Canales is born and raised in Corpus Christi, Texas. Graduated from Benavita Secondary School in two thousand and eight. He attended the seventy-seventh session of the Corpus Christi Police Academy in two thousand and eighteen. He's been with us for a little over three years. I had the pleasure of actually being, hiring him. He worked here for a short time also, previously, when Chief Jero at the time was here. He has been with our, again, works in the patrol division. Prior to becoming a sworn police officer, Juan served for more than three years as a community supervision officer for Nuasis County. So he's got a different experience other than just sworn police work. He holds his intermediate peace officer certificate through TCO. In two thousand and thirteen, he graduated from Texas A&amp;M University Kingsville with his Bachelor of Science degree. When he's not at work, Juan enjoys his free time going to the gym and spending time with his family and their two dogs. The one, what I'm gonna tell you, and one of the, we have a lot of police officers, and everyone wants to get, well, they wanna promote, they wanna go into CID. One of my, the big reasons I chose Officer Canales to go into CID, if there's somebody wanted, if there's something missing, Officer Canales will go out and he will fetch that for you and bring it back in. We're the cops, and we chase robbers. And Officer Canales goes out and he puts the robbers in jail, day in and day out. He's good at what he does. If you, we understand police work as it is. You call the police, a patrol officer wearing this uniform shows up, they take your report. What happens to it after that? Goes into the Investigations Division, the detective, works that case, tries to build the evidence, have that case prepared, to get a product to the district attorney or to the county attorney for prosecution based on Officer Canales' performance in patrol, where he goes out every day and he spends every minute working on his calls for service, looking for people doing things they shouldn't be doing, and treating people the right way, whether they're a victim, whether they're a witness, or whether they're a suspect. I believe that he's got what it takes to go into an investigation, pick up that case from the patrol officer, and carry it forward to the finish line with the district attorney's office. So with no further ado, let's make this, this fine patrol officer detective. Congratulations. So what, something I started a while back that said, oh, I could do very ceremoniously again, promotions as the, I think in any career, certainly in police work, it doesn't have to be in a vacuum. Very ceremoniously, we have somebody that they care about important, then they pin these new badges on their uniforms. Whoever's to the net, come up here, folks. We have some guards on standby, but it's just direct pressure. Go ahead, lock yourselves up, take that going off, and then put that thing on. So this is, go ahead, real quick, this is the future of your police department and leadership right here.
All right, next on the agenda is the consent agenda. That's not even. A while back, it was pointed out to me that if the print got small, I couldn't read anymore. And I have these new lenses that were put in my eyes by a really good doctor, so I wouldn't need these anymore. But I do need these when the print gets small, which happens when they point out to me that I skipped one or whatever. So to get back to the next item on the agenda, citizens to be heard. This time, comments limited to three minutes will be taken from the audience for persons who have signed Speaker's Card located on the table in the back of the training room, the service center, and delivered to the city secretary before the meeting begins, or written comments received by four o'clock PM on the day of the meeting. On any item, on any subject matter or the agenda, will be read and summarized in the minutes of the meeting. Persons wishing to address the council and who have registered using the citizen participation form will have up to three minutes to speak. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, council may not discuss or take any action on any item that has not been posted on the agenda. While civil public criticism is not prohibited, disorderly conduct or disturbance of the peace as prohibited by law shall be called for the chair to terminate the offender's time to speak. I have one card. Mary Ann Palmire. That's as close as I can get reading that down there. From four oh five South Sixth Street in Fulton wants to talk about National Night Out. Come up, give us your name and address, and go right ahead. You got three home, man.
I have Mary Ann Palmire, Fulton County, Washington. We are having a National Night Out at the Rockport. And we'll have a dog park parade in town hall. And then we have hot dogs, coleslaw, beef, and roasted pork. And lemonade and water, and we'll have information. And I've ordered regular stretches, parking lot, drunk doggy house. Chova bread, crime stoppers, boy scout. And hopefully, we'll have an actual live person. So come down and enjoy.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Next item, as we said a minute ago, which wasn't really the next item then, but is now, is the consent agenda. All consent agenda items listed are considered to be routine by the city council will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of agenda. Does anyone wish to remove or change any of these? If not, do I have a motion? Have a motion second. Any further question or debate? If not, call for a vote. Ward one. Ward two. Ward three. Ward four. Mayor, aye. Wow. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. We're gonna call to order a Rockport Planning and Zoning Commission to hold a public hearing at six fifty-five. Yes. All right, we will have a quorum at another meeting, and we'll get around to that. Yes, ma'am. Okay. We can do that. Thank you. All right.
For one fifty-seven, Cluedy Trail. Mr. Kretschman's and his family's home burned earlier in the year, and not realizing that they couldn't, they moved a manufactured home onto the property and then requested power, which of course, we couldn't give them because it's zoned R1. So Mr. Kretschman, and he's here this evening to give his statement as well, but he's asking for a cut to be able to use the manufactured home until they can rebuild their home.
Okay.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate you having me tonight and for the accommodation that you made to have a council here for this. So unfortunately, our structure burnt down in February, and there's been a myriad of consequences to that. We moved a mobile home onto there just because the plan was we needed a place to live. We've got a family of five and a dog. And just to start rebuilding the structure that burned down. And unfortunately, we learned the hard way that we did not understand the zoning. As a matter of fact, there may be some other issues downstream from this. It wasn't presented to us that it was a R1 property. But that's neither here nor there. Right now, we're just requesting a little bit of dignity for the family and some pursuit of happiness so we can just take care of business and house the family in a safe environment and rebuild. Excellent. Okay. Thank you for your time, Mayor and Council. Appreciate you.
Mayor and Council, on August the thirty-first, we opened bids to replace an existing concrete bulkhead along the north side of Nassau Drive located in the Key Allegro subdivision. It's between the Casa Allegro condos and a property located at seventy-seven Nassau Drive. The bulkhead was severely damaged by wave action during Harvey and subsequent storms. This is part of the GLO grant projects. This was an addition to the GLO grant allocation to the city of Rockport. We had an engineer come in and work up an estimate, the engineer's estimate for the bulkhead project. When the bids were open, we only received one bid, and the bid was about three times the engineer's estimate. And because it was only one bid, and it was not a bid that could be reviewed by the engineer to be determined adequate to accept the bid, we're asking that the bids be rejected and that we rebid the project. And we're encouraging the bidder to bid again. And if you read my cover sheet, I'm doing the best I can.
And if you read my cover sheet, I'm doing, uh, the best I can to not disclose the, the only bidder's bid price. I don't want to shop his bid out there and let others know what he bid or what they bid. So we're just asking this bidder to, to rebid the project. And we're also soliciting other bidders to come in and bid this project. It's only two hundred and ten linear feet of bulkhead that needs to be replaced, but it's been in bad condition since Harvey, actually before Harvey. And, uh, we really want to get this done, but we would rather rebid the project and see if we could get a better price for the citizens of Rockport. Be glad to answer any questions.
You advise this was a GLO grant. What's, uh, what's the local cost match on that?
There is no, there is no local cost match. It's all GLO funded.
Okay. No, I think it's important. I mean, we, we've got an obligation to the grantor that we follow the most stringent procurement possible.
We, we did some research and, you know, we, we looked at the price per linear foot for bulkheads that have been replaced within the community. And this one was about three times the cost per linear foot. And we just couldn't understand why. And some of the things we were told is it's a small project. It's, we're going to have a hard time, uh, getting our equipment in there. And that's why the price is so high per linear foot and everything. But we just, we honestly think we can do a better job. You want to ask?
I'll make the motion, uh, to reject all bids as stated.
Motion, I have a second. Motion second. Any further question?
Uh, it's been a light two weeks for me as well in, in the ward, but I appreciate council support for the forage resolution. Uh, I, I jokingly tell folks I have about fifty kids and, uh, they all bring, you know, goats and pigs and turkeys and rabbits to the table. So it's a great program. Uh, I've had three of my own children in it. I was a product of the local forage program myself. And, uh, I'm just really glad to continue to see community support, uh, not just from our elected body, but from our citizens. All right.
S T R ordinance, uh, I believe, uh, uh, city manager met with the S T R committee, right, at, uh, chamber last?
They came in here.
They came in here. Uh, and got good, some good feedback from, from the, uh, residents that attended that meeting. So I think we're on the right track there. Uh, we did, uh, thanks, uh, chief, for getting some of our drainage stuff removed, uh, along Concho and, and some of the areas. We needed to make some stuff disappear or move. Uh, still working on some of the old Rockport areas, but, uh, other than that, I'd also, uh, Rick's not here, but, uh, just publicly, uh, thank Rick for his time with the city. He is retiring and, uh, just want to thank him for all he's done for the Parks Department here for the city of Rockport. That's all I have.
Good for.
Uh, okay. I have a couple of things. I guess, uh, last week I attended the chamber luncheon. Um, where our own Vanessa Schoner spoke and gave updates on the city. Um, I wanted to say I appreciate you doing that and making sure that people are getting the updates that they are needed. Um, on top of that, we do have Seafair next weekend, which Katie did not mention in her ward. So it's going to be a busy weekend, but please come out and enjoy. Um, there is going to be a carnival, which I know a lot of kids are really excited about. And on top of that, I think that's about it tonight. Thank you.
Everything running? It is 7:45, we are back. We are closing the executive session, we're back in open session.
Open.
Exactly. We're adjourned.
Got you, that's right.